When three of the four projects coming to downtown don't park themselves, haven't been required to, otherwise those deals wouldn't have worked. So I mean, I think you get the point of what I'm making here.
No, I understand the point completely, but I guess methodologically, again, just from a technical point of view, if you're going to adjust the sales that we have for a scenario in which the parking is off-site but being bought out.
Which no one's had to do yet, so it wouldn't pass.
Then you would take the sales and you would make adjustments for that, and theoretically at least, it should end up in exactly the same place. I mean, from a technical point of view, the answer should be identical. More units, but, you know, with more of an offset to adjust for the parking differential.
Well, Chestnut has a zip car. That's not 35,000 times 100 units. It's a zip car. It's one parking space for a zip car, and we call that their parking contribution. And so I just don't think it's realistic to say that there would be two stories of parking. And when it comes to the issue of feasibility obstacles, as you term them, and trying to manage around those feasibility obstacles, I'm in a different perspective, or I see my role up here as coming from a different perspective, and that's as having a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayer. And I'm all for the vision of downtown. I've supported the mayor's vision for downtown since the beginning, and I still do. But when it comes to looking at what's going to be done with that site, I care less about what's going to be done with it, whether it's a 15-story building or whether it's a four-story, you know, stick-over podium building. I care less about that than I do about the value to the taxpayer, because that is a public asset. I have a fiduciary obligation to the taxpayer that we get maximum return for that asset. And so that's really what I'm trying to get to the bottom of here. And I'm not 100% sold on the 15-story building yet. As I said to you last time, I'm willing to entertain this notion and to really try and get there that it's going to have this catalytic effect on everything around it. And I'm open to that, I'm open to hearing it. But when we're trying to figure out, take the 15-story building away, right, because I don't think the appraisal should have... My fear here is that what we're doing is we're saying, okay, in order for the 15-story building to work, the appraisal needs to come back at X. And then how do we get to X? This is the scenario we set up. It's a 48-unit building with two stories of parking, even though we haven't had anyone else park themselves, because that gets us to X, whereas really, we want to get to what the true value of that parcel is. How much of the Hancock parking lot, percentage-wise, is that parcel? The R1 or whatever the 15-story building is?
The entirety of the parcel is about five acres, as I recall. Somebody will correct me if I'm misspeaking that. And if you take the footprint that has been programmed here, it's about 13,000 square feet, 13.5, 13.526, I think. And so it's quite a tiny fraction of the entire parcel. You know, I guess I keep coming back...
So what would it be in a percentage-wise? Is it 1%?
Oh, 13,000 divided... Craig, if you can do the five... Five times 43, 516. And then 13, 526 divided. I think it's...
Six percent.
Six percent.
Okay, go on, you can finish your question.
Yeah, so I guess what I keep coming back to here is this idea that what we're trying to do is... Again, I want to state very clearly that this was not a back-solving exercise, okay? This was not an exercise in which you say, oh hey, you know, it's a million bucks, let's devise a scenario that gets to a million bucks. That's not the exercise. It's about trying to understand what the marketplace would pay for a site on which the market would build what the market can do feasibly. Recognizing that whether you treat parking onsite, as we have in this hypothetical, or we treat it as a cost offset that has to be bought and paid for against the land, it kind of doesn't matter. You know, the effect of those two approaches, albeit both hypothetical, should be the same, technically. And, you know, ultimately, beyond that premise of a market-based, highest-invest-use concept, the other thing that I think is important to recognize, and this is sort of off-topic from an appraisal question, that's what goes to the why 15 stories, it isn't just the catalytic effect of that project on the overall value for the district. It's the underwriting of 20% of the garage cost. And underwriting public improvements that would not otherwise be, you know, be available were it not for a project helping to pay for those costs. And again, to Craig Seymour's earlier point about interest rate risk and cost risk, the project at 15 stories, again, almost three times what would be possible on that same site in comparison to what a market stick-over podium would allow. That project gives you an ability to underwrite 20% of garage cost. And again, it's an anchor to that part of the overall downtown utilization.
So that makes sense to me. That sounds like a good benefit, 20% of underwriting of the cost of garage. If I knew the cost of garage...
Well, you would.
I mean, if the garage is $100,000 and it's 20%, that's less impressive than if it's a million dollars and it's 20%. I know I'm making up those numbers, but 20% of what? If you're telling me that's the benefit, it's 20% of something, my next question is, of what? I'm going to give you 20%, of what?
Well, it's 20% of whatever the cost is. So it means that no matter what it is, your obligation is for 80%, not 100%. So that's a good thing. But, you know, I also think, not to be flip about it, but that the cost will be known at a point soon. And quite frankly, if the cost is too big for you or for the developer, that their 20% share is too big, then guess what? It's not going to happen. And so, you know, I think that it's important to recognize that these trains are coming, leaving the station, we hope simultaneously, garage and development agreement, to arrive at their destination more or less simultaneously. And if we treat the decision-making in a purely linear fashion, that is to say, get the garage decided and then decide on the development agreement, the risk associated with ever getting the development off the ground multiplies by a dramatic amount. So I know it's uncomfortable to be trying to make choices here on the land control front before you know what 20%, you know, what is it 20% of? But if we can't get the trains leaving the station at more or less the same time, the whole enterprise is imperiled, in my opinion.
You're asking me to get on a train, but now telling me where it's going.
Well, we hope where it's going is...
We hope that there isn't a big queue with the two train and carriage.
You know, not just completed, but fully occupied and generating cash flow.
Well, thank you, Pam. That's a great transition to Bill. If I could get a moment with Bill, a couple of questions about the cost of the garage most. So we don't know the cost of the garage, you had mentioned...
We do not.
Okay, and we don't know the number of spaces in the garage.
Every project starts with...
No, no, it's a yes/no question. I'll give you plenty of time to think.
No, no, I'm not asking in court.
Well, my question... I didn't ask your question, those were statements, so I didn't ask anything. But my question is, why in the URDP do we spell out a cost and we say it's going to be 600 parking spaces in the Hancock lot? What's the difference between what we've all adopted in the URDP and what's being thought about now? Why the difference?
Because we're still engaged in a planning concept. We believe that it makes sense to assess a range of potential spaces, both in terms of demand as well as in terms of space. We have fellow councils who are saying, we should stop, build bigger rather than take a chance on having an insufficient supply. So we are doing what I think is the appropriate approach, which is to assess the market as well as the feasibility in an engineering sense, as well as the traffic flow sense and all of the other attributes that we need to consider.
So the 600 parking space number comes from the amendment number four, which was updated by the administration on June 6, 2006. Now, that was only six months ago. Has the market changed so dramatically in six months that 600 units isn't the starting point of what we're talking about?
It's a consideration. It may well end up being 600 spaces, because the cost may make those determinations. And that's the purpose of the exercise, is to determine the cost as well as the utility. And it could end up being 600 spaces, but it doesn't prevent us as a planning matter to consider more if we think there's a potential that it will require more. And as Pam said, that's one of the important issues, both for these two developments, that they provide cleaner tenants. And I can assure you that it isn't going to cost $100,000 for the garage, it's going to cost multiples of millions. And so I would hope that this body would want us to take as wide a range of considerations, wider range of analysis as we could possibly engage in to assure that we're going to get a garage that meets the need, that is affordable and financeable according to the dictates of the revenue that could potentially be generated by the garage and contributed to the DIF.
I appreciate that things are changing in a dynamic fashion every day. I get that. But I wasn't the one who decided to write 600 units of parking in the Hancock lot in the URDP. I would presume that was based on copious amounts of research, parking studies that were done downtown that were previously conducted by the city's consultants. The value, I mean, there's a value to building that garage that's discussed in the URDP. So, I mean, quite frankly, I was surprised to hear you say tonight that you're getting to a point to estimate the cost of the garage in March, hopefully by March, and that it's not a fixed cost or number of spaces yet. Because again, I feel like we're working with an equation where we don't have all the numbers we need to make the decision. And Pam made a good analogy wrong. You know, we're... It needs some trust here, and that's fine. But when numbers change, and numbers that I was asked to take a vote on multiple times to adopt as a policy, when those numbers are then asked of someone in the process now and we're told it's still kind of up in the air, I suppose I would be more comfortable with hearing that, well, 600 is what we've identified as being needed there. We're either seeing some facts on the ground that suggest we need more spaces or facts on the ground, market forces that suggest we need less spaces, but not kind of, we're hoping to figure it out by March. I mean, do you understand my point there? 600 units should be the starting point, that's the default, because that's what we all agreed upon in multiple, multiple hours of hearings previously.
I'm not going to disagree with you. However, there are changed circumstances, and we are opting to take a fulsome look at whether 600 is the number, whether 650 is the number, or the 700 is the number, or any other number that comes in between that. Obviously, we need to come back to the council. The council will have the ultimate approval authority for this.
Yeah, and you say that, I appreciate that. But what happens is, we take a vote on the land disposition agreement in support of a 15-story tower, and then when it makes its way back to the council, we're told, well, you have to vote it this way, because if you don't, the whole project falls apart. So it's really not presented as a choice later on. These are the times that we have to make these decisions, because later on, there's only one vote you can possibly take. We can't, we're not going to blow up the entire deal should it proceed. So it's difficult to take a vote, like an LDA vote, on this without knowing the details. Without, well, we get 20% underwriting, of what? See, I had thought that it was going to be of the 600 parking space garage. All along, we've been told that parking through the streetworks, after-streetworks, leading up to this, we've been told that parking is going to be one of the biggest drivers of both the success of the downtown, the feasibility of the downtown, and most importantly, the financing of the downtown. So to hear that that number isn't known yet troubles me in a way, because it suggests to me that we don't have a firm grasp on what the feasibility is, what the market needs are, or what the financial capacity is for the garage to pay back some of the monies that we're going to expend from the taxpayer chest of money here. So it's concerning to me that we don't have that number, nor that we've been updated along the way of what's changing that number. So I'd like to know, what is it that you guys are seeing now that suggests the 600 number is no longer the number that's in? What is it that you're looking at that might change that?
We're looking at prospects that we will need a higher capacity. That's part of the analysis. Do we need a higher capacity? I respectfully disagree with your hypothetical.
Which one?
Your hypothetical, which is that it's not possible for the administration to do a fair analysis on a range of parking opportunities in the garage and present that range to this body for its deliberation and its decision as to predicate it on the additional information we gather as to the market need and the other drivers of what potential capacity for that garage will be.
So you're saying we need in March? When would the likely vote come on the garage? The expenditure for the garage? Timeline marks?
Well, we hope to have the preliminary estimates by March. We're obviously going to analyze them. As I mentioned in my prior comments, we are looking at different types of constructions, two principal types of construction. There are other factors that would be involved. So it would take us some period of time, and hoping that we're working with the prospective contractor for the construction of the garage in Chestnut Place, that we would have a range of options for this body to consider when we come before it in sometime in March, say, late March, early April, and make a presentation to the council.
Based on a range of options of both the number of spaces and their associated costs in more building design?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, well, I'll take your word on that one. You know, I hope that's the way that it goes. I've been up here for eight years, and I got to be honest with you. That's my experience in how some of these votes have been presented to us, is oftentimes that I hurry up and vote after waiting for things for months and years in some cases. But that's fine, moving forward. I accept your word, I believe you, you know. I believe you, I accept your word. But I would like to know what's going into the parking considerations moving forward. So, you know, maybe separate from this, you could fill me in on some of that. I'm happy to have a conversation with you about that in a little bit more detail, and I think we can get into it tonight about what the administration's looking at and where the drivers are in terms of that. Because again, I think that the parking is really a linchpin to the whole downtown development. That's the way it's been presented to us since the get-go.
That's a better basic case.
Right, okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Gary, I appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. I think, Mr. Gary, I think... Currently in the Hancock lot, how many parking spaces are currently in the right yard? Approximately 500, so 500. So we're looking to add 100, 150, maybe 200 total extra slots. So that's really self-sufficient, to be settled in the fact that we're going to be dealing with more spaces. I don't know if that really comes down to this. Okay. Now, say this body moves us forward and the O'Connell Building picks the financing in that reason or the Hancock lot gets structurally built. Timeframe on that has to be 90 days to kind of get everything together, then what, another 15 months to kind of build? In 1950, 1917?
My understanding, and this is all part of a preliminary study, but my understanding is that depending upon construction, it'd be 16 to 18 months?
16 to 18 months. So approximately right around... So let's just say we move forward, I want a year and a half of time, and then we go. In that timeframe, let's say it's all moved forward, where's everybody going to park? That wants to go use the courthouse, that wants to go to the fours restaurants, go down and have a drink, but where's everybody going to park?
You may have noticed that the Ross garage area has new lots. We will, we will plan whereby, as spaces are taken out of the... And this is going to be on a staggered basis, so are taken out of the Hancock lot, we will move people over to the Ross area, just as when we took down the Ross garage, we moved people from the Ross area to the Hancock.
How many spots are in the Ross block now?
I would say it's about 235. I got my two computers shaking their heads up and down.
During this timeframe of, let's just say, a year and a half, 18 lots, will there be a transaction on that Ross lot? What if somebody wants to come in and do something? Are we just going to leave that lot for the parking purposes of the O'Connell Building really built, the Hancock lot really built for the parking situation? How does this all transpire? Because for me, my vote's based on a lot of these variables, because you're looking at, you look at, you take all those parking spaces away, we've got to have an alternate funnel of where these people are parked.
We are working on an alternate plan. And I might say that we face a same concern when we took down the Ross garage. There's a great deal of concern of whether or not we'll be able to accommodate all of the parking that's displaced from there to the other lots. We acquired a parcel from the Sina, we built some other satellite lots, and we're going to continue that type of implementation. This is a complicated dance. There's nothing easy about it at all, but it doesn't mean you don't dance.
Oh, I have no problem. See, I'm on the other page here, I have no problem with the parking.
So that's the way we're proceeding with this, is to plan both the sequencing of the construction and the loss of spaces in the Hancock lot as it relates to evening times. For example, nine months ago, we entered, I'm sorry, six months ago, seven months ago, we entered into an agreement with the county commission whereby we control parking at the courthouse at night for when we begin this process, so that we can ensure that people who want to patronize the business establishments that are peripheral to the Hancock lot will have a place to park in the evening we need and have during our discussions with developers. When they, if their buildings come online before the garage does, and that's why we're trying to make certain that the garage comes online, if not before those projects, they come on simultaneous with those projects, and failing that, we need to have a plan where we're going to park those homes. So all of those elements are in play. You may recall, the last time I was here, think of all of this as the air traffic controller's radar screen. All of these vehicles are in motion, and we're trying to make certain as best we can how to land them safely and have the other ones take off and go to their destinations. So we are making every effort to work this through in a reasonable way, and all of these projects are being connected.
A lot of moving parts.
A lot of moving parts.
You know, just my concern is while this is being built, maybe not, I'm looking to move forward, I mean, I know all the council's, but that Ross lot is still available. Because if you look out there right now, I mean, how many satellite lots can you use? There's not many parcels out there. You don't have much room up there, to be honest, unless you start building.
But you will notice that most of those, and I did this on a daily basis, I take stock of how many vehicles that are out at the Ross side, and the capacity far exceeds what the usage is.
I mean, I think it's great that it's finally paved, and I used the other data for the papers and have a little meal, and it was great. I just walked right over it. There was no money in the little gates, it was free. It was good, it was an alternate place of parking needs if everybody else did. My other concern is this, is, you know, we're building and building and building, we're building a lot of residential. We're not really forcing more on a commercial end. Now, I have questions, and I know this is far down the road, but like other councils have spoke tonight, this goes in motion, the other ones are kind of all going super there. I'm looking at R2 and R3. It looks like it's going to be some more residential, I mean, residential and apartments. But my question is, where's the commercial? If I was somebody that was going to take myself out of one of my, take myself out of a house or whatever it is, and I wanted to buy it or rent it in downtown here, I'd be looking for a commercial. I'd be looking for what kind of amenities does this place have besides getting into Boston? Does it have, you know, a wide variety of restaurants? Does it have a wide, a wide variety of, I could say, a little supermarket or, you know? What does it have extra that would gravitate me to Queens, New York, if I wasn't from here? And if I was from here, why, how can the downtown, in a nutshell, help some of the people that already live here? What, I'm looking at R2 and R3, to be honest with you. And I'm saying to myself, what commercials dwellings are going to go in there? Do you have an idea of, is there anybody, is there players looking for R2 and R3?
Yes, there are, who's looking for R2 and R3. And as I have testified before this body in the past, we remain concerned that there is a balance that needs to be struck between commercial and residential. Let's remember, we're debating two projects that have been under consideration, deliberation by the administration, negotiation by the administration for a year and a half to try to get these off the ground for a very eastern Chestnut dimension. It's not coming out of the ground yet. So it's not that any of this is a slam dunk. All of this requires hard planning and work. And we remain concerned, and have been concerned, about increasing commercial development. Mr. Faxis and Mr. Stevens and the planning department have been assiduous in pursuing prospective commercial developments and meeting with developers. Ian Bunnair announced just a few short weeks ago a very exciting development as part of the sale of a hostile property, working with a subsidiary or affiliate of Granite Telecommunications. Foxstock has an investment trust that specifically concentrates on commercial properties, and they have expressed an interest in the Ross garage site. And we've begun meetings with them. We're going to be meeting with them every two weeks going forward, because they want to fast-track their effort. They've been in the process of looking at purchasing properties, and we're going to, on a parallel track, we're working with them for commercial developments that are going to occur on the Ross side, which I believe, when we are able to come to terms with them, are going to be very exciting, exciting for the city and actually transformative as commercial. So as of right now, what I have on this last page of the full downtown development is in R2, it says in the first floor retail would be 15,300 square feet. And I also have in R3, 12,000, 8,000.
Then I also have in R3, twelve thousand eight hundred fifty square feet. These are very important numbers because are these going to change? Because I'd like to see more commercial, but that's another subject for another day. With these based on, because see, once we put this into motion, everything's got, it's got to follow. So are we, are you bound to stay with these spread footages for this, you know, mixed-use slash commercial side? Because if you're going to put up, if R2 and R3 change to straight residential, just a parking purpose, I'm going to bring that, I'm going to be a very upset counselor up here, but the fact is that I see first floor retail, first floor commercial on both of these two structures. And if it changes, it changes everything. We've already voted on putting this in and putting that in.
Whatever, whatever is built there, first floor is designated for commercial. Even on the fifteen-story tower floor, it's commercial. On the fifteen-hundred proposal, the first floor is, as a matter of fact, first floor is very robustly commercial. And it's built on the latest, that it relates to R2 and R3, the city has made a designation on that.
I mean, I understand that. That's what I'm trying to say is I don't want it to become, we came out, this whole map of URDP or the district, I guess you could call it, and all of a sudden it became it's all residential, all these buildings are residential up there. Well, it doesn't benefit to the regular people living in the city because that's going to be just residential.
But although we said, councilor, talking about two projects that are before this body now, we're not talking.
I know, I know, I understand, I understand that.
We don't know R2 and R3 are going to be and market forces to some degree to make those choices for us. And as I said, we have been continually concerned about.
I'm concerned with that aspect of it. That's the ingredient that I'm looking at when I'm baking the pie, like, it's got to be a commercial because we're what, eighty-five fifteen right now? It's about eighty-five, you said fifteen, yes. I don't want to get up into eighty-seven thirteen.
And I'll hop in back to what I said when I appeared before the council requesting approval of the URDP number four, which is that what we're trying to do, not only is strengthening the balance with residential, is to rebuild the downtown area as an economic engine for this, to provide employment, to provide other opportunities. And it can't be all residential, but the plan we set to begin with residential to make Quincy, downtown Quincy, for the first time ever in a certainly outridic-like, I mean, an area where people can live and hopefully can ultimately play. And that's what these two projects have been about for the last year and a half.
I'm very optimistic that that's going to work out. I hope it does because we're all thinking of giving a fake here. And I like what I see, I just want these things to go into motion. Once we get started with this, once the engine gets started, Maverick and Goose is up and doing Top Gun up there, you know, your vote is, I mean, it's got to be aggressive, you know? As the time comes up, it takes a year and a half or two years to build, people have to weather that, that, you know, traffic and movement of parking and it's the center of the city, it's the downtown district, you know, it's going to, you know, walk the hand and parkway that's out there, you know, it can get a little congested. Where are all those people, you know, going to be able to park that are working on these structures, you know, and are working with that? We're running out of a lot of parcels and space out there when we talk about satellite parking lots. And is there any, what have you been thinking about possibly putting these workers in satellite lots a little bit of distance from here and driving them into this to save thirty, fifty parking spaces?
That is certainly an option we will consider. It has been something we considered before the demolition of the Ross garage. So it is absolutely an option that we will consider or involve because we considered it before and fortunately, we didn't need to implement it because the plan that we devised and then the plan we implemented worked better than what in our wildest dreams because the congestion and the displacement did not occur. What occurred was the fact that we saw underutilization of all the lots over in the Ross side.
But without the Ross, without the Ross block right now, we'd be, it'd be pretty difficult to do this without that lot. And where would you have thought of doing this, actually?
We had options for other satellite lots. We followed up very quietly in terms of, effectively, in terms of making arrangements with county commission for courthouse. And we acquired a license to utilize the Masina lot and build those lots before the construction of demolition of it off the Ross garage period and demolished the garage thanks to the planning of working on it on schedule so that there was no disney. And so when we brought it back online as quickly as, but there is some Nelson long-term infrastructure issues, that's why you see that there's still some degree there related to drainage and water loss.
I think a lot of this comes from the councils that spoke prior to it and they saw some things that, I saw a little different angle in what they had to say, it made a lot of sense. This is, I mean, as much as West of Chestnut was kind of started at all, this really covers this whole Hancock lot, to be honest, this is it, this is the structure that, and I like the fact that a luxury apartment, I like that. I like something a little bit different, that's going to be a little more attractive somehow, that's different than what we already have out there, you know? And I think the structure's good. I'm just holding on the back end of this and if we come down quite again, is to make sure R2 and R3 has the adequate commercial that we're looking for. Because that's important to me, to the vision, to what you're making.
Yes. We're looking at some of the remembered charters now. And so we want to bring back that commercial vitality and it can be brought back. You can go and see other locations, other older urban core cities such as ours where they've been able to reclaim their retail past. Thank you, Mr. Gary. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gary, good to see you. I have a question. One, while we're talking about this and following council members' questions, this parcel, the RDA, the R parcel, covers six percent of the landscape of the Hancock lot, which is a five-acre parcel. While we are downlaying looking at R2 and R3, those landscape areas would still be to us for parking in the interim? Yes. So it's not, we're not losing the whole Hancock lot, we're talking six percent of loss of the Hancock lot. We already have alternatives in play in the courthouse. We still have the current existing parcels, R2, R3. The garage within the end of construction, utilize those as their planning takes on and the timeline, maybe this goes to where they'll be developing in LDA to get through their permitting process. R1 still needs to get through planning board process, correct?
Correct.
Right. And so their timeline, will they be expecting a spring file on R1?
Yes.
Spring?
Yes. Spring file for?
For the planning.
That's already applied.
It hasn't applied.
It's already applied, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Okay. To councilor, I'm going to wrap this up.
Good evening, councilor. I appreciate all your questions and all the presentations and I appreciate you being here so that I can ask mine as well. So we sort of go through and ask you and then ask you because I just have a question tonight because when they were in all the presentations.
That's correct.
I just wanted to ask you.
It's good. Excuse me, councilor, can you speak in the microphone? I have.
Yes, I'm sorry. Is that better?
That's not bad.
Okay. So you said earlier tonight in front of us that there's an updated timeline that you have for us and are you referring to the timeline that you presented to us back from December?
It's the same as the last time.
So there are any issues there?
It's the same as the last time. The only thing that was updated on those two timelines was the fact that the legislation was signed by the governor. As we progress, we will update them as they go along, but it really was only one item on all the items that were listed.
But the update is that this ticked off, right? There are no changes in dates or completion.
Correct. Not at this moment. That's not to say that dates won't change.
No, no, of course. I was just wondering because you mentioned tonight you said there was a change or an update for me. So I was trying to figure out what that was. And then earlier too, you also said that, actually, I don't know if it was you that said it or if it was Pam that said it, that if we flip this process, right, so we don't approve the LDA, but we in fact go to the garage first and we go to, you know, the other approvals that we're looking at here, where it's the garage construction contract, widening of Cotty Street and the park, the DIF bond authorization, those are all things that is coming in front of the city council after the LDA. And again, there was a mention either by Pam or by you that said if we flip that process and we, you know, go to the garage first and we look at those numbers and we approve that and then we go to the widening of Cotty Street, we look at those numbers and we approve the bond, and then we approve the LDA. There's a risk there. Can you elaborate on what that is? So I can understand why we can't actually flip that, get where legal to?
Well, I couldn't explain it any more eloquently than, and explains anything of that matter. But the, as you referred to it, linear vision, linear vision doesn't win the world. If you didn't have these prospective two developments, as Pam mentioned, or slightly, you wouldn't have two anchor tenants. And those anchor tenants are important because in the case of the O'Connell project, it could be twenty percent of the cost of the parking garage and whatever LBC ultimately ends up leasing for a fixed period of time when they're ready to proceed. So that has a real value. And if you were to plan a garage in a vacuum without those two projects, with the uncertainty that other projects would come along to provide commercial space as well as, you know, restaurants and commercial space as well as residential occupancy, you'd have a more difficult time trying to define your market, trying to identify your market. At least with this, you decided the catalyst, the synergy to bring people to the city. They have a reason to come to the city, whether they live here or they want to have dinner here or hopefully larger numbers, they want to work here. That's what allows this to be an efficient way to approach that problem.
Okay. So then we report the LDA first. My understanding of what you're saying is that we're able to better understand what the command is going to be for the garage and the other parts of the board, et cetera.
That is correct.
And then for, right, and this is mine, it's my question to you. On one of your slides, there is a number in there that says that there is a, from 2006 to now 2017, a forty-three point three million increase in commercial value. Where is that? Can you just give me a rundown where you got that increase from or where you got the increase from?
That was a note that I made on this. Let's see what names are on it.
These aren't numbers, it's on page two. If you go to the second page, second bullet point down.
All right. That's the increase that the assessed value from the time from 2006, from what the commercial property in the DIF was assessed at, it's now forty-three million dollars higher than fiscal year 2017.
Okay. And then if you go to the owner, it then says that we have a different revenue or, yeah, different revenue charter. In 2016, the commercial was one point two million dollars and 2017 is one point two one. So there was a decrease there?
Yes. There was some.
I'm just trying to figure out why there's an increase. It's a large number, it's been around ten years and then it dropped.
Between these two years, what happens? Two things happen in commercial real estate. Sometimes it disappears. And what happened when the Hancock lot, block was purchased for West of Chestnut and those types of things, those, some of those commercial values, commercial properties came off the tax laws. So they were reduced. There's also, commercial property also deflates a little bit each year by depreciation as it gets older, it gets depreciated. So it's something, all by itself will go down unless it's constantly reinvested in and freshened up all the time and more money's put into it for it to continue to go up along with the market forces right. So in between just these two years, between last year and this year, fiscal years, there was a very small decrease in the total assessment of commercial properties within the DIF district.
Because West of Chestnut came offline.
That was, I think that was probably the major cause because you took, there was commercial.